Okay.
Wait, that's right.
All right.
Well, two, ready to go?
Oh, did you?
It's the only thing I would imagine.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July twenty twenty five meeting of the Old Lime Zoning Commission. At the table today, we have Mary Jo Nozel, permanent member, alternate Michael Fogliano, permanent member Denise Savagejo. We have our secretary Jane Marsh, permanent member, alternate Michael Peter Barnes, alternate Mary Gardner Coppola, and myself, Paul Orzell, Eric Knapp. Our land use coordinator is in the audience, is here as well. All right. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing.
Before you do, you need to seat.
Oh, right. Thank you. We are missing Michael Miller full time, and the rotation puts Mr. Fogliano in his place tonight. So, Mr. Fogliano, you are now a permanent voting member for this meeting. Unless Mr. Miller shows up. Okay, public hearing petition to amend the old lime zoning regulations. Section five dot ten dot three special permit uses permitted in the C thirty zone. Crossing out the text crossed out text to be removed, and the existing text indicates retail dealers stationed for sale of motor vehicle fuels. Town of Old Lime. Zoning Commission is the applicant.
Hey, what this is waiting for me. Okay, my my, we can do that from here.
Oh, yeah.
It's quick. So, oh.
Okay, all right.
Since this is our own amendment, I'll read the exhibits. He pretty much covered the legal notice by saying what he said.
Sorry.
That's fine. So that was published twice. What he read, basically, we have exhibits A, which is the petition to amend. Exhibit B is a letter from River Cog. Exhibit C is a letter from the Gateway Commission. Exhibit D is the legal notice. Exhibit E is the old lime P Planning Commission minutes. Exhibit F is the certification of mailings. Exhibit G is a letter from C cog, another referral. Exhibit H, letter from land use coordinator E nap dated seven eleven. Those are exhibits, right?
Okay. In the absence of anyone else to present, let me just sort of again explain what we're doing here. At the commission's request, I prepared an amendment to the regs that removes gas stations from the permitted uses in the C thirty T thirty S zone. Those are the only places where it would presently be permitted. Obviously, the existing four gas stations would remain, but there will be no new gas station permitted in town. The planning commission, as you saw in your materials, did give a positive referral on this, saying it was consistent with the P O C D. Again, this is a public hearing. You can hear from the public on this. Should you decide to vote in favor of this text amendment, you need to do two things, one of which is set an effective date, and two of which is just confirm that you believe it's consistent with the P O C D. So again, this is a commission proposed application, so I think more or less you guys know why you proposed it. But if there's any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you have any further questions for Eric or amongst ourselves? Hey, none. All right. At this point, then, I will open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this proposed amendment to the zoning regulations?
Okay.
Okay, so silence is golden. Then I will entertain a motion that we close the public hearing for this application.
So move second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed abstain. Okay. Secondly, then, I will ask for a motion to approve the removal of the existing text for motor vehicle fuel stations in C thirty zones that A are consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
I'm going to ask for an effective date of August eleventh, if that's okay.
Effective date of August eleventh.
All right. I so moved that.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Mary Jo. All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed abstain. Okay, the amendment and the permit passes five zero zero.
Okay, that was pretty simple.
Okay. We have no new applications, formal new applications. So we'll move on to tend to item C, other business. This will be an informal discussion eighty dash one Lime Street. I'll remind the commission that this is not an application. It's simply an informal discussion, probably an education for our part as well to a proposal for the Lime Academy to do some additional educational and art education and art display functions. Yes, right applicants, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You'd like me to address the.
Yes, this is the just the commission.
Your your name?
So I'm Michael Duffy. I'm the chair of the board of the Lime Academy of Fine Arts. And I'm here to share with you some plans that we have that relate to the property that's adjacent to the campus. It's Gilborough's property, which has been operated as Studio Eighty for the past fifteen or so years. Gil is putting the property for sale. It's been on the market for about a year. And we initially took a look at the idea of purchasing it because it's such a sort of logical complement to the campus. And we decided last year that we didn't have the wherewithal to do that. In the interim, we were approached by a couple of donors who were willing to make a donation of one point eight million dollars in order for us to be able to purchase the property. We would essentially make like use to what's happening there now for the purpose of the academy. So the house where Gil has lived, since he's owned the property, would be rented to a long term tenant. Would occupy that space. And the sculpture barn in the back would be an auxiliary building to the campus so that art growing sculpture program could make use of that facility in much the same way that Gilborough has used it as a sculpture studio for the past fifteen or so years. That's that's our intention. And before we followed through with the donation being tendered and the purchase being made, we wanted to share our plans with the zoning board to see if there are any questions or concerns that you all had as a part of our due diligence in understanding whether we wanted to move forward. In preparation for this meeting, we've met with the historic district commission at their monthly meeting to speak with them. And we've also reached out to the abutters to the property as well to share our plans with them. And so we've got representation attorney Tim Herbst has been assisting us in this matter. And Tim, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to what I've presented.
Sure. First, good evening. It is really an honor to be in this beautiful town hall. This is my first time presenting the town of Old Lime, and it's great to be here. And it's great to be associated with and affiliated with what we believe to be a very noble and worthy project that we think is going to be not only good for the organization, but good for the town of Old Lime as well. Chairman articulated some of the key points involved with the acquisition of the property and the intended use. I'd just like to briefly summarize those and then perhaps discuss some of the special permit criteria that's codified in your regulations. And then what we would hope to do, and we're very grateful for this opportunity for pre-application review. After we conceptually talk about what it is we would like to do, we, of course, welcome your feedback informally to see if there are any things that you might identify that we have not identified. So we are very appreciative of that. As the as chairman indicated, Lime Academy is now under agreement to purchase eighty dash one Lime Street. And the vision is rather simple. It's to preserve and enhance the property's current character and function, not to transform it, but to integrate it into the academy's educational mission. To briefly summarize the proposed plan, not to be duplicative, but the main house would be leased long term to a single family. Two existing apartments on site would be leased to faculty or students. The existing art studio would be used for instruction and creation of sculpture and art. The outdoor sculpture grounds would continue to be used for educational and exhibition purposes. The in-ground pool on the site would be abandoned until then. A privacy fence and landscape buffer would separate the residential and instructional uses on the property. Importantly, under our proposed conceptual plan, all student and faculty access would come from the academy's main parking lot with foot traffic entering the studio via an existing fieldstone walking path. The current driveway on eighty dash one line would not be used for public access to the studio. And what's perhaps the most important here is obviously the regulations and how does this application comport with your regulations and need its meet their goals and objectives? So under section five point two point three of the old line regulations, it is our position that this use clearly falls within special permit categories for private schools and nonprofit education use. Just to highlight some of the key points in the regulations as it relates to specific special permit criteria. The lot size is four point two five acres, so the property far exceeds the minimum in the RU forty district. With respect to landscaping and screening, a robust buffer already exists to the north, and we are happy to evaluate and improve buffering to the south if needed. Parking remains entirely on the main campus, so no new traffic or access issues are anticipated. We believe that the compatibility of use, which is an important criteria under your regulations. We feel strongly that the proposed art instruction is far less intensive than prior commercial uses, such as metal fabrication that occurred on the property for years. And the architectural impact, very limited. Very limited exterior changes are being proposed. With the exception of a possible roof over an existing outdoor work area. And we are happy to work with the commission on design elements to ensure compatibility once we get to the special permit application itself. So in summary, to keep it brief and to take your questions, the Lion Academy is seeking to honor the artistic legacy of this site, ensure its continued use for education and public enrichment, and formally integrated into the academy's nonprofit mission. So we're grateful for the opportunity to share this vision, and we'd be more than happy to take your questions at this time.
The oh, good.
Can can the residential part that you're going to lease to a family? Could that comply with zoning if you actually delineated that and separated it? The two apartments that you're going to rent to faculty, I don't mean to include just the just the part that you're going to rent to a residence. Could that be still meet regulations and be ordered off?
So what you're what you're getting at is whether they're separate or together, whether they're.
Well, could they be separated? So that you could actually take the the rear part or wherever the studio is and these two apartments you're going to rent to faculty and devote them to your educational uses and have the the front part that you're not. It's not anything educational to rent to people. That's a regular. But is it? It's a lot big enough and configured in a way that you could.
Suppose like a free split or something.
Divide.
Subdivide.
Yeah, make a division, make a division in the property.
We would obviously want to consult with town staff to see if there's any recommendations.
We we had a very similar discussion about this. I'm not sure. I mean, you deliberately not mentioned who you'd be renting to. Is that something that isn't not something that you want to disclose publicly at this time, or is that?
Not at all. I I think that our goal here is to rent it to those that would be using it for educational purposes, whether it's faculty, students.
Okay. Let me go that the the house originally, I mean, again, as you described to me, the people who are donating the money would then have essentially life tenancy in that house. And they would participate in the arts programs on campus. Is that still your?
That's exactly right.
Correct. Okay.
But you see, that's still only.
Absolutely. And I I had this exact discussion with them already, and that's why we're here tonight to get out in the open what issues there may be with this. Okay, that was the only issue I really saw too. However, it's a big issue, so I wanted.
Just to clarify, is that because the the land designation for the college doesn't allow single family dwelling or doesn't allow?
Yeah, their site plan doesn't include a single family dwelling.
I mean, their their primary use is educational. And therefore, to have essentially a single family house in the middle of their educational campus is not really consistent with that goal. Now, again, to the extent, as Jane mentioned, they want to have apartments for professors or students. That's fine. That's okay.
They already have some.
But again, to have a random single family house in the middle of your campus is not usually consistent with what colleges or other universities like this do. So they described it to me that these people, there would be inactive participants in the college. And again, I'll leave it to them to argue and make that that case. But again, they I already had a discussion with.
Got understand. I I saw the avenue for them for success. Would that be to amend the regulations and for the educational zone to include a single family dwelling? Or is there other some other way to enable them?
So they have the possibility of drawing a line in the properties that they're buying.
Correct. Doing a free.
Adding the back part of it, as long as the front part still conform zoning. And add the back part to their.
Campus. So then it absorbs.
Then we don't have to worry about parking or whatever. Just becomes part of their campus, and they're going to use it for all the right things that are part of their already existing approvals.
Gotcha.
And then the front part would be you could still rent it to the same people and and they could still participate. But this could be any future problem if you had to sell it or rent it to somebody who wasn't affiliated.
Is this a rental to them or a use of the property?
It's a rental.
It's a rent.
Yeah.
So what you're getting at, Commissioner, is what happens in the future, in other words?
Yeah.
Where they're not living there anymore.
How do we? One, one thought is that after their tenancy, that you could imagine the house being the home of, say, the artistic director of the academy in much the same way that colleges or institutions have a place for the president or, you know, some other important dean or something like that.
That's where I was going with that. But but it's money. I don't think a college professor or a dean pays for that. The college owns it.
Right.
And then they provide tenancy to the president or or whatever of the of the institution. So that's what I'm trying to see if there's a loophole there.
Well, as an example, is I I do a lot of the cleanings of the buildings at Connecticut College. And there's a substantial amount of residential homes on the Connecticut College campus, which are leased to the, like you said, the president of the school, the dean, the teacher.
They leased.
They are leased.
Okay.
Back, but they, you know, they pay reduced rent to live on campus. But they do pay, and at least in that circumstance, they do pay to live in those dwellings back to the college.
Again, those are people who are specifically affiliated with the institution as opposed to the people who are just giving the money for the purchase, which I certainly have regular sympathy for. I'd love to see this succeed. We just got to figure out the way to do this in a way that meets the regulations.
Right. So it's basically having checked to see whether you could act, because four and a half acres is a lot bigger than normal size lot.
Right. It's an R fifteen zone, I think.
But you don't you need a Mabel on there?
Well, you would need at least thirty thousand square feet to conform to our minimum. You know, we don't create new lots of minute, less than thirty thousand square feet. But even that is only three quarters of an acre, and they've got multiple acres to play with.
It all depends on it. Yeah, it all depends on how the the buildings are set up on the property, whether they could do that. I guess my question, I I mean, I think that this is a a discussion that we need to have, but I would look at. Do we have anything that prohibits? You said that it's not usual, but but do our regulations specifically say we keep?
No, it doesn't. It it comes down to your interpretation of what is traditionally part of a private school use. So they're your reps. You can interpret them however you believe to interpret them. But again, Jane is saying her interpretation is not consistent. You might say otherwise. That's certainly a discussion for you guys to have at the table. I I'm not going to, as CEO, tell you the right interpretation.
But again, it was an issue that I I raised with them as a potential thing to talk about with the commission. Though I so I I do think, you know, looking at that, if it's if it's potential, and it is clean that way, and it's still on the property, you could still lease it to whoever you want. You could still in the future, lease it to whoever you want or let someone else use it. It just wouldn't be part of the main campus. It would be a separate lot that you would own. So that that wouldn't be a problem per se in terms of your use. And just a couple of questions I had, and this has to do with when you're talking about not using the driveway. You do have facility that you need to maintain, have access to possibly for heating, for maintenance, even for people using it. You you're, yes, somebody coming for a class might want to walk there, but somebody who's bringing in equipment or, you know, whatever materials they need. So I'm looking, would they need access? How would? How do you anticipate that? Would it be through this residential driveway? Or are you anticipating that there would be more than a footpath between your campus and this campus, basically, you know, saying, you know, because I'm looking at like even possibly, I know I do, you know, when I do a lot of instruction, it's one of the things like, I've got a lot of stuff in my car sometimes, depending on what I'm working on. And it's like not having the person who's doing that have access for a car. So I just wanted to clarify that.
If there was nothing that prohibited us expanding what's now a footpath, as Tim described, that's a stone footpath and making that something that's would allow for vehicle access, we would like to do that at some point.
And so that's what you anticipate doing that, rather, because I'm looking at that you're going to have to have access, like I said, for just pure maintenance of the building, you know, what, you know, that that type of thing, emergency. So we're going to have to have vehicle access back. Even if it wasn't used all the time.
For the for the immediate term, it would be through the the driveway that's there. I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but.
Yeah, well, I looked at the air photos. So I did. So that so that so I just want, I just think that we should make sure that we're very clear about that. There's got to be some type of vehicle access e access, even if it's not the public and, you know, we're not going to have school, you know, the, you know, classroom people going there, but there will probably, you know, that will need it for something. And then the other thing that I was just wondering, I was looking at the aerial photos and I, you know, and and obviously, this is something that's probably not as important to your decision. But you did talk about covering the art installation that was there. So I'm looking at that. Are you would, you know, what I saw, and I haven't been over there, I would just look at the aerial photos, and we all know that that's limited. The the art installations wasn't, you know, sometime, you know, worked into the woods. I was looking at you looking at having to take down trees to do that. I wasn't sure if there was some pieces of art that were just very, you know, closer to the buildings that you wanted to cover. But because you said leave some covered, leave some uncovered, and I noticed that in the woods, I was looking at two things, you know, of maintaining forest cover and also, you know, not increasing impervious cover. So I was just looking at that, just things that we would be considering as you're looking at that. I would think that's not a make or break deal. That's something we could work out, but I just wanted to bring up that that's something we would be discussing in terms of what you're what you're anticipating doing.
So it was a condition of the cell where asking the seller to remove the sculpture that's there currently. And that the sculpture is of a size where taking down trees would not be necessary.
Okay.
In order to accomplish that.
But I'm talking about where you were saying cover that, you know, you were talking about putting a roof to cover the sculptures. Is that the one you were talking about?
That's a small, probably, you know, forty by forty work area.
So not so not the area, so not the sculptures that was in the.
No, it's it's sort of in the paved area in front of the sculpture barn.
That's that's what I thought from reading it. That was what I was anticipating, but I just was like, there's a lot of sculptures out, you know, on the property and, you know, and you could that you could see in the airport. So so I just wanted to focus on that, but otherwise, I'm okay.
Is there water supply separate for the two buildings?
There are two separate septics, and there's one well.
One well, so it's a served by one well. Could it have a second second well?
Yeah, that would be important.
I'm sure I'm sure they could, but you can. Why? Why couldn't they run the two dwellings to?
Well, again, if you're.
Even if you're going to divide it, though.
Oh, you you find the department of.
One of the other possibilities I suggested was that, again, if they want life use of this property, that they commit through the special permit process that following the the death of the current tenants, that at that point then be dedicated to faculty or some other consistent use so that, again, you had a limited period, you know, for the life of whoever was, you know, donating them the money there to live there. But then after that, it would then sort of be folded into the the standard, you know, uses that you would have for that site, whether that's something the commission would consider or not.
You want. See, I think of it as another way is that if you actually make the separation, now it's an asset that you have that you don't have to fold it into your.
Well, my understanding from the seller is that they considered this issue when they put it up for sale with us in mind. And the reason they didn't pursue it is some of the questions that you're raising in terms of water and the need to to dig a new well and septic and the proximity of both of the septic to one another and whether one would have to be moved or another one would have to be created and the expense associated with that.
So so the water that you have for the school can go to your new culture barn, wherever it's from. I don't know where it is.
Although the water use for that is going to be, I wouldn't say de minimis, but pretty limited.
Bathroom, isn't it?
You'd think it has bad.
So I'm just, I'm I'm thinking more in terms of how do you protect yourselves in a way? So because your school can provide water. If you've got a water supply to your school, you can supply that water to the back. I'm trying to think of it as integrated into your school, the back part.
Yeah.
And and why not? Because that seems to be a permanent idea.
Yes.
And and so integrating that portion of the property, but being able to to have a standalone thing in the front that these folks can use and they can participate. They can put any kind of conditions on it if they want. They haven't put the condition on it, have they, that you can never sell it or anything?
No, no, not at all.
Right. So to me, being able to have that asset that stand alone, and we can approve the incorporation of the rest. And we don't have to ask a lot of questions about the back because it's already something you could solve all the problems for, including parking and 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 access and all that.
I just have a question to make sure I'm clear. Right now, the property lines are separate. So you have a residential property.
And no, they're not. They're not separate. That's the point. We're talking about making.
No, wait, wait, no, I think we're a little confused here. I think they are. Okay, separate. The 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 lot that they are looking to purchase is a separate lot from the college.
Oh, yes.
Yes. So that that is true. Yes.
All right, great. And I think that's kind of where I'm sort of in line here with Jane, but if you were to combine your property lines, would you not have to go to planning for that?
Combining property lines is not involved going to planning. If there was a lot line adjustment where you took the back part and merged it with the college, but basically created a smaller version of the current lot in the front, that would need to go to planning. But if you just combined the lots, absolutely, that did not, that does not require a planning commission approval.
Even the lot line adjustment, it's just to prove that you need the zoning regulations. It's not a real subdivision.
It is not a subdivision at that point. No, you.
It's a peculiarity. We have an old line that you go to the planning.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That was sort of where I was at. To me, it just made sense, I think, along with Commissioner Marsh to keep them separate. And you had kind of indicated to me when I read this about putting landscaping between the two. It kind of seemed like maybe you were allowing for that possibility. But I just thought it would be cleaner also.
Okay, so I have a technical question then for Eric.
Sure.
People are talking about just taking a lot split, like you can just split the lot because that's a first cut. But is this a re subdivision?
It the goal, I think, would be not to create a subdivision at all. I think the goal would be to do a lot line adjustment so that the rear portion was merged into the college and the front portion remained as a separate lot.
If we do that, do you have to be, can you create a nonconforming lot?
No, the the front lot would still need to be conform.
And that's what I'm concerned about with the proximity of the of the buildings. Would you be able to meet your yard, your your setbacks?
Okay, you if the building is in a current setback, you would still be able to keep that. The building is in a current setback, you would still be able to keep that violation in the future. But you would not be able to create a new violation by where you drew the lot.
That's what I'm saying, those two buildings are so close, I'm very concerned that, and that's probably what they explored. I'm looking at the aerial photo and the studio and the house are so close, I'm concerned you would be cons- uh, uh, creating a non-conforming lot.
I have it right here. Okay, um, that would be, let's see. Um, R fifteen, the. Rear property line setback is thirty and setback from the street line, and this would need. Uh, it would, so it would be, okay, it would be two. Rear yards, in that case, it's thirty and thirty, which we're not gonna meet there, doesn't sound like.
No, definitely.
There's no way.
So.
Actually, we'll look at the aerial photo.
Again, yeah, the, the other, I mean, the only other way to do that then would be variance, and I'm not sure why this wouldn't be then self-prepared hardship. Um, if you were trying to get a variance for it, you know, obviously, the ZBA would be incredibly sympathetic to the, the goals here, consistency with P O C D and all the rest of it. But. Uh, you know, is this, with this really neat, the, the. Unique hardship requirements or so, I, I'm not gonna speculate, my, you know, my way of brain tells me probably not, so.
So does that, so does that make the, to amend the regulation on the campus regulations to include a single-family dwelling?
Well, again. Rather than going back and amending your regs, which you certainly can do. Um, I think you may wanna consider sort of some of the other possibilities that have been kicked around at the table tonight. Um, such as, again, having the life use and then get, having it used afterwards for, uh, yeah.
That's, that's what I want to, just ask the question here of.
Okay.
Is that a possibility?
Not only is it a possibility, it's, it would be our intention.
That life use is granted to the current residents, and after that, then.
It has to be used.
It has to be used for.
Precisely.
The educational purposes.
Precisely, and, and it would be, you know, in, in the world where you're thinking about. Uh, attracting and retaining an artistic director, to have the ability to provide a home for them to live in. Would be, and it really is significant asset and something I think we'd want to do.
And I would just add to that, that obviously, I, our preference would be. That it be of the zoning commission and not the ZBA, but I do feel, because this is a special permit. I do believe the case law in the state of Connecticut gives you. Discretion, not only consistent with your regulations, but. With the common law of the state of Connecticut to apply reasonable conditions to address these very types of concerns. And I think you've heard from my client that they're not adverse to that being a condition, in fact, they welcome it. And if there are ways to condition it in such a way to address these concerns. I don't think we would be adverse to that.
Could, could you give us a document that would? Um, create this life use for these two people?
Sure, we're in the process now of drafting a lease between the academy and the tenants. And we could include that in any kind of submission that we make.
Yeah, it becomes sort of a permanent condition, um, land records, I would say, that this has to be. After these two people die, no, no other hang-on relatives and other people, they, that, that when they die.
Yeah, that's a solvable legal issue here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'd like to see it.
That, that language is already in the draft.
I'd like to, to see that.
More than happy to submit that.
To me, cause, cause the lease isn't exactly the thing I'm looking for, something that be. Attached to the property and the, the land records, more than the lease, cause the lease, just leased.
Basically, what you want is that in the future, if there's a successor zoning commission. Forty years from now, thirty years from now, and they want, they wanna revert or change it, for whatever reason, they've gotta come back to the commission.
We could do that.
Yeah.
So they're twenty-six years old, you said?
So, I just a couple of other questions, so the house now, um. It's a residential property, it would become a part of the nonprofit?
It would, and, um, we would anticipate that the tax assessor may have an opinion about whether that portion that's leased. Is subject to property tax or not.
Okay, um, and I know right now, or. Previous to this, the, um, Mr. Borough had a, um, he sold some of the. Pieces now, so that part of the, the. Commercial part of that business will no longer be part of this enterprise?
No, we're not anticipating that we're gonna be fabricating things for sale, now, of course. We have a gallery, and currently, if you go to our gallery, there's work for sale by faculty and students in the. Chauncey Stillman Gallery on campus, but in terms of selling anything out of that place, we're not anticipating that.
Um, what about our fire codes for the school part? Um, is there a concern about? Um, making sure that everything's appropriate for that kind of work? I mean, I know he's been there for a while, but this would be.
The fire marshal would need to actually approve the plan.
Even if we were to get. A conditional special permit approval or special permit approval outright, um, before we can take, you know, occupancy. We have to comport with health department, fire marshal's office, building department.
It's not really a zoning thing, it's more public health.
Well, it is, but I will also say too that, you know. Before a building permit is issued, there needs to be a certificate of zoning compliance to make sure that we are in conformance of zoning for that building permits issued, and. Like I tell some of my municipal clients, that's where you stop it at the counter and you make sure that everybody's on the same page. And that's where we make sure we're on the same page.
And, and again, I made sure I did go talk to H D C, and I did talk with E D Mallory afterwards, and H D C, she was to be more or less okay with where this is going as well. Cause I knew that was also an important feature of what we're doing here, so.
Another one of my questions, well, take care, on to. So I guess key takeaways from tonight, just to make sure that I memorialize, uh, what I heard tonight, because it's obviously gonna guide. Our application, um, obviously, there is a, I, I would think that. Primary concern, one is after the life use ends. That there'd be some form of a guarantee memorialized on the land records. That it would revert back to the educational mission and not in any way. Uh, be anything other than that, and in, if, for whatever reason, somebody wants to change that, forty or fifty years from now, they have to come back to the zoning commission.
Right.
So I've heard that one loud and clear. Commissioner Marsh, I've, I've heard your comments concerning whether we can. Separate, but. The lot, but we obviously have to work around setback issues.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, so we're gonna, whatever we come in with, uh, we, we will look at it, but if, for whatever reason, we can't. We're gonna obviously explain why, and, um, I think we are all. In agreement that, uh, we are not adverse to. Conditions of approval, and we think that, in point of fact, you're entitled to, to impose those conditions.
Is it just the two people that are gonna have the life use?
Yes.
Yeah, nobody.
Nobody else.
That's something, uh, going back to what you said, if, if they go with the life tenancy. And that ceases upon the death of current occupants. Does there need to be any subdivision or lot lines, if everything stays the way it is?
Because they, 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 again, they're committing that this house is part of the.
Current campus, right.
Yeah, they, a- all that they would need to do at some point is just. Acknowledge to us that these, both these people have now died, and that this use is now gonna be incorporated.
Does the parcel incorporate into the school?
Yeah, it's always been part of this, uh, w- w- once they make this transfer, it's all gonna be part of the school. And, okay, you, that's not gonna change upon the end of determinity of the life, life use. Again, life use is gonna be restricted to basically living in the building. And that, when they finish living in the building, the, the building will be used for other purposes.
Yeah, okay, good.
And theoretically, as a whole. It's a, since it's a separate lot and they're not merging it with theirs. They could sell it, they could sell it back into the private market. You know, they wouldn't have their sculpture gallery anymore and stuff like that, but.
So that was my question, is the plan to merge that lot? Into the school? Or to keep it as a separate asset?
I think it'd be in their best interest to keep it as a separate asset, right?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's just, so we're, the life tenancy, yeah, this is just a little hazy here.
This is where you also get into issues too, when you merge and not merge. The tax assessor's obviously gonna have a lot, he's gonna wanna say about this.
Nonprofit, so.
But, you know, separate together, I mean, it.
We're, we're really open, uh, uh, either way on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, zoning necessarily has to require one or the other, I mean, that's not a.
Accepting that the campus itself is. The use is dependent on the campus, so it's dependent for its parking, it's dependent on, um, uh, access.
Yeah, like any other commercial use or non-residential use, once you sell it, whoever buys it, they need to come in for a new approval of whatever they wanna do there. I mean, they, they can't promise you that forevermore this property will be used for whatever the purpose is, the college quit a business.
And that's why I think saying separate is to their advantage.
Okay, but again, I'm not sure, they, they need to commit to you tonight which way they wanna do it.
Right, right, I appreciate it.
And it's not, and it's.
You're looking at that initial use, is there a real distinction if, if the long-term plan is to have the residential part incorporated into the use of the, of the academy? Is that initially used not for the purposes of housing their benefactors?
Well, that's not usually, uh, that's not usually considered to be the educational use. How's the benefactor? So, we're sort of, that's where we're having asked there, they said they would be participating and things like that.
Absolutely, for opportunities to simplify this.
Yeah, but it's not the same as having. The school president or the school, you know, artistic director or somebody live there.
They do have a relationship with, with the institution.
But it's just a relationship.
Big one, yeah.
Yeah, so every time we go into something, we could go move in, I don't think it's gonna happen. Um, no, I think it's, to me, it's, that's the touchy issue. Um, is to have them there for a period of time, and figure they're not young, right?
I, I, yeah.
Of course, young.
I, I, I used to think I was young, I got a big birthday coming up next month, so.
They're not more thirty.
Are they adjunct?
I don't think you're faculty.
Right.
We, we can't ask those kind of questions.
We can, because this is.
No, we can't.
I think we can.
So you're not calling out?
It's the life tenancy, it is what it is. Life tenancy, I think, is, that's, that's the key.
The idea, Jen, is that, is that. Initial use of the residence is, is preset, they're not going out and, and onto the open market to. Provide a rental to anyone, it's, it has a specific purpose, no, anyway.
But it's not a purpose.
And that's the thing, is we would want the lease that's set, that they can't, you know, sublease it, that it's for their use only, I mean, those are the types of things that I'm assuming they're building in.
That's a part of the draft.
It's pretty involved.
To, to try to summarize what we need you, for you guys to make your informed decision for your purchase and sale agreement. Do we, as a commission, think that this is a?
You're not gonna take a vote, you're just.
I know that, that's why I'm, I'm saying, do we, we wanna get a send?
I think at this point, their, their, their main question is. Should they proceed with an application, is there a way forward? I think that's what they're looking for tonight.
Oh, see, I, I was under the impression they were looking for something else.
Well, I mean, we, we're not allowed to.
Not, not approval, but.
Yeah, but all, all we were sort of gonna say, but, but does the commission think this is in general a good idea, I think they're walking away with a sense that. There may be an issue or two we need to resolve, but as, the commission as a whole seems to be. In agreement that this is probably a decent use for the property.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get, to give them the best guidance for, to execute their purchase and sale agreement.
Do you feel that way?
I do.
Okay. Who else feels that way? I don't see any, being any opposed.
We should support this school, we want them to.
Absolutely.
Have pride.
Yes.
Has not been a guarantee in the recent past, and if we were to lose that as a town. It would be a significant blow to our town.
Totally agree.
Want them to stay, we wanna keep them healthy.
I'd agree.
This is why we really appreciate how quickly your staff, I have to give them a lot of credit, turned around. Uh, our request for the, the pre-application review, we felt this was very important. Because we wanted to get commission feedback, we wanted to make sure that we filed the best application possible. And we factor in any concerns that you may have when we pair it.
You don't have a one point eight million dollar lame duck that you can't use.
Like I said, we're gonna work through these issues, so we're gonna get it done, we're gonna get it done, but we appreciate your time.
Yeah, and, and we wanted, we wanted to hear from you directly before we proceeded, it's, it's a big step for us, and we're trying to be very. Uh, careful with the resources of the academy and, and not take on more than we can handle. To with the fact that we took a pass on this the first time, because it's more than we, we could do, but. Slowly and steadily over the last five years, the academies come back and enrollment is growing and.
Right, I think it's great.
So, so one of the things that we have to be careful as a commission is that even if we really love an organization and really want it for the town. Every decision we make is a precedent.
Of course.
And we can't select and say, well, we like this one and we don't like that one. So if, so this residential use.
It sounds like there's a lot of actual discretion.
No, there isn't as much, there isn't as much, we're stretching it, we're stretching it.
That's what discretion is.
Yeah. And yeah, I think the, the only thing.
I respect that you're uncomfortable with it, I do, I respect that you're uncomfortable with it, I think. Uh, you know, I've seen plenty of cases where you have. Faculty that has retired, but because they are an esteemed member of the cathedral community, they're allowed to stay in the residence that they're on. Um, that they're, that they're living in, because the idea, they wouldn't wanna make them go and live. Somewhere else, and, and, you know, like you were saying, they're still potentially paying lease, I mean, I think, there's lots of. It, maybe it's not as clean as it could be, but there's lots of, um. It's not such an extraordinarily out of the box situation that we couldn't imagine why this wouldn't actually be good, it's not a matter of liking an organization or. I think. Yeah, the house has been for sale for over a year and no one else has bought it, and there's a lot of other houses for sale in our downtown right now, so. I think that, just kind of jumping off from what you two said. We know that, that the college was. In top financial straits for a long time, and, and I think it's fair that. Members of the community appreciate what you've done to support the college, I think that's very fair to say. But should, God forbid, should you fall on hard times again. Would it benefit you to have that property separate? Financially, just something to think about.
Would agree.
There's something that, yeah.
Then that's something you guys need to decide tonight, so, I think we've gone as far as we're gonna likely go on the informal, and we can pretty much wrap it up for you folks, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. It was nice, my first night in online.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again. Okay. You know, I wanna bring my wife up to look at some of these houses that are reserved. I spent her an old line. I, I tried to get her up this way, and then, uh, she's, my wife and I got married two years ago, she's from East Haven. Very close with her family, she's like, Tim, look in Brantford, it's right next door to East Haven.
Come to the bubble, gotta come to the bubble.
I love it up here, my blood pressure comes down after.
Exactly.
Yes, it does, it is a true statement.
I thought it had to be.
Thank you.
All right, next item, do we wanna do the Z E O report now or after we?
Why don't we start with the Z E O report?
Okay, Z E O report.
Okay, um, several things to talk about, um. You have in the folder over there, the lighting proposals, so I think we can sort of pull that out, I think you can hand that out. Um. Gateway has proposed. The, the gateway, the Essex gateway, but your local gate, uh, Shoreline Gateway Commission. Has put together a draft of what they are looking for in lighting for zoning regulations. Um, and just one page, I'll happily find it for you, Jane, it's in that here. Here we go, okay, so pass these around.
Take care, thank you.
They're looking to come in at some point and present to you.
This came from who?
This came from Shoreline Gateway.
Gateway.
Gateway Committee.
Committee, yes.
Committee here and now.
Thank you. Sure, on a lighting.
They, they, they would like the opportunity to come in front of you and explain this to you and explain why it would be a good idea to incorporate it into your new regulations. So I'm handing it out tonight.
That's it.
And. Yeah, again, you don't need to come up with any answers to it tonight, though, if you have any questions, I'm happy to bring it back to the Gateway Committee and see what they have to say, but this is. Their take on what they would like to incorporate into your new regs for lighting proposal. So that's what this is, and Paul asked me to just do a brief sort of presentation about what they wanna do and where they wanna go with it. And again, I'm not really here to present for them, they would like the opportunity to do that themselves. But you can see what they're looking to do, and again, if there's anything you'd like me to get back to them about, please let me know. And we'll try and get them in here, I guess, probably September.
I was gonna say, we're looking to do this in phase two.
Potentially in phase two, though, we don't think it's that controversial, we can put it to phase one, it's.
Well, okay, no, controversial aside, it's, it's precedent setting, and again, if we're gonna start opening up, which I. I'm going to keep bringing this up at our meetings, the need to open up. Discussion with the other committees and commissions in town about, um, the zoning rewrite. discussion with the other committees and commissions in town about, um, the zoning rewrite. But if we say that this committee can come and talk to us just because they happen to take the initiative before anyone else and bring this to our attention, then we've got to have a plan for how we're gonna bring it in from everybody else.
They, they may come in and, and speak to us, to this.
Yeah.
But the current phase that we're in right now is, thank you, and this is in my opinion, is thank you.
Yeah.
But this is phase two of the project.
So I think we need to make that clear. It might not be very good for them to come in in September.
Then are we gonna just, again, just keep pulling that thread, right? So say some of the other committees and commissions here that they've done this, and they're like, oh, well, we want to put something while you're still in phase one, even though we don't really know what phase one is.
I don't, I don't.
And then the next thing we know, we, we have like a whole bunch of these trickling in. So I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be smart to preemptively come up with a decision amongst ourselves for how we want to handle all of these, the, the whole aspect of it, not just this one specific lamp.
Right, because F H I is gonna lead us through a process that is gonna do exactly that. Once we finish phase one, they're going to say, okay, now is the time to bring this and this and this together.
Right.
And to get, as this goes out.
Exactly.
So, yeah, maybe that's a good idea. Maybe Eric, that if we get any things, things of this nature, say thank you, but it's gonna have to wait till phase two.
Actually, Z B A, Z B A has done the same sort of thing. I have, you know, I know Nancy's had a whole big proposal, what she'd like to see in here. And again, we are, we're I am happy to tell them, please wait until phase two is ready and, you know, we'll take it up.
Now, as, as part of that, um, again, I think there, it would still be appropriate to have something come out of our group that explains to everybody. So Eric doesn't have to write a separate email every time or whatever, that it's not coming, it doesn't look like Eric's making this decision, but that it's coming from the commission, that this is how we decided to handle this. And so then I would say preemptively, then we give this to each committee and commission, say, this is what's going on. This is where you're going to fit into this process. So start thinking about it now, but don't bring anything to us until whatever date.
Okay.
Any question on the scope of this? Is, is the proposal that this applies to what's been laid out as the Shoreline Gateway, which is roughly from Otter Creek down to the police station and from the tracks to the shore?
Yes.
They, they want this town wide. They want this.
This is, yeah. The commission, the committee, yes.
The committee.
Committee doing that, but this is.
But they're proposing this for the.
Right. They're the same ones drafting the blight ordinance?
Yes.
So do we have a draft on that, too?
You do, but that's not part of your zoning regulations. So I didn't show that to you because it's ordinance. That would be entirely.
Not, not reg.
They said ordinance on this too.
Okay, so I, I deliberately, it was one PDF. I sliced it into two and gave you a text because I didn't want the zoning commission getting bogged down in something that is never going to be part of your zoning regulations.
Gotcha.
Okay, the blight ordinance is entirely a separate entity. So this could be in your zoning regulations. The blight couldn't be, so that's why you're only getting this.
And I think a lot of it already is in哈.
There are pieces that are already there, but again, I, I felt obligated to give you exactly what they gave me, and so that's where we are.
So, so why don't we discuss, um, what, uh, Mary Gardner said, should we, as a commission, then make a motion that any ideas for zoning regulation rewrites um, are, could be accepted, or Eric kind of tells them, or we prepare a memo, something that goes out to all the town committees and, and boards saying, please hold everything until we get to phase two and then we'll
Yeah.
let you know.
I, I think it would be good. I, I, I agree with Mary in terms of having a memo that goes out to everybody and saying, everybody knows we're updating our regs. This is where we are. We're in phase one, phase two. If you have proposed changes, you know, we're, we're just cleaning up. We're reorganizing. We're just, you know, doing.
Why don't I put something together and I will email it around to folks and say, this is what I'm thinking of sending out. What are your thoughts on it? And if we can come towards it to get it on that, I will then make sure everybody gets a copy of the official policy so that we're, we're clear on that.
Because I think, I, I think it's good that what the other commissions know that we're going to be seeking their input.
Yeah.
Just that.
Right.
We don't want it. So that they're getting, so they're having their meetings and they're being prepared, but to understand that, we'll let you know when phase two is here.
Right.
And I think it would be good for the, for the general public to know, too. If we had some sort of roadmap for how this phase one, phase two, what's happening in phase one, phase two, when do people plug into it? Whether the hearing is gonna happen, so the public has an opportunity just to.
Yeah.
And that's the, and that goes to everybody.
I mean, maybe F H one has a Gantt chart or something that can give us, that we can put in this thing.
Well, in, in the original proposal, there was a timeline. It's already slipping somewhat, but you know, they did have a timeline of when things should be happening. But I think it would be, as opposed to putting sort of a timeline grab, you know, to give a two sentence explanation of here's where we are now, here's where we're expecting to get to, the public input, be ready when we start going into public input, we'll, you know, we'll let you know, okay?
I, I'd like, I would recommend a little bit more than just two general sentences. Thank for two purposes, for our own planning and preparation purposes of the commission to, you know, start, I like your idea of a roadmap, Mike, of, you know, um, putting, you know, just setting up so we can anticipate what we're gonna have, what, when are the busy periods gonna be? Recognizing that some things could slide, of course. I think it's also just from a public communications piece, if it says transparency and doesn't look like we're just making behind closed doors. And then the third, and this is like the, you know, I was just, from my background, it kind of holds us to task that like we've got to keep moving forward on this to the extent possible, because it can be easy to have things slip unnecessarily.
Can, can you draft something up and give it to Eric?
Sure. And what I will also do is I will ship out to each of you again, what F H I gave for their original timetable, just so that you guys can see what their original proposal was again, and we can sort of use that as a, as a template for where we're going from here.
Okay. You have something, I believe, in the report that's of a legal nature, correct?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to go into executive session for that.
Okay, well, let's, okay. Um, I have been approached by Matt Willis regarding the Miriam's and their very large house and a potential settlement offer, and again, he is not here. There's no actual offer on the table to explain to you, but I just want to explain where we are. So would you like to go into executive session to discuss that?
I would like a motion that we go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Marsh. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain. Okay.
Um, who made the motion? Um, okay, you, you made them, okay. I'm, I'm asking the secretary tonight, too. So I just want to make sure I understand. Okay. Okay. Great, and so later, I'm not sure how to stop it and restart it in the same manner there, so. Um, that, that's gonna keep, well, tell you what.
Back on and we're back on the record.
And is there anything else in the Z E O report?
A couple of things quickly. Two fifty four road, the oral argument has been scheduled for next month, I believe, on this. For one of the two appeals are being heard separately.
This is the, would this be the first one coming up then?
Yes, this will be the earlier of your two denials. There still has to be a oral argument or even the second of the two denials.
Just sorry to correct me. The difference between the two was the one, first one had business uses and the second one did not have business.
And size of buildings.
The second.
No, they reduced somewhat.
Did they reduce the size of the buildings?
Twelve foot from fourteen or sixteen or something like that.
The size of the doors is my recollection. They said they would, you know, just for certain uses.
Bathrooms.
Yes.
Okay.
All the above. So. When I hear more from that, I will let you know. Fifty eight Hartford Avenue, that is the parking lot for Kokomo's that's further up the street. I have been getting complaints all summer that it is not being properly supervised.
Shocker, Mary Jo, shocker.
So last Wednesday, I literally stood in the rain with Frank, Noe and Brian and sort of hashed things out with them. It was pretty much an hour of them screaming at me about why am I picking on them?
They said it's him down the street, isn't it?
No, not me. In any case, so just to let you know, I am continuing to make sure that they live within the terms of their special permit. My last letter to them said, look, if this is going to be an every year issue, then there's clearly some defect in the underlying permit. And maybe we need to go back to the commission and address the underlying permit, which obviously they do not want to do. So.
Chalk around that one too.
So that's where we are. Again, it has been an issue running all summer long and I suspect it's going to continue to be an issue running all summer long. Last thing on the Z E O report, steak signs. Just in the last several weeks, I have made it a practice of going out eight o'clock each morning and picking up steak signs and bringing them back here and having them put in the garage here. There's a collection of about twenty of them or so.
Garage where?
Just underneath the building over here.
Can I get in there?
And so far, no one has asked for that.
That's because we usually think Ed takes them. So we usually go to the public works to go.
Well, how much I haven't heard from Ed. I've heard from nobody. So there's a couple of small swoop signs. There's about twenty or so, the steak signs there. And as long as no one's going to ask for them back, I'm going to keep taking them.
There's a new banner at Hallmark's on the fence.
Yeah, yes.
That one's been there, but then they loaded the grass with the steak signs.
Yeah, I have six of their steak signs.
When it says serving now serving breakfast, right?
And Bill and.
How do you pull the ones from the state right away though?
Just go get them. Like this.
That's the state's jurisdiction.
They're not hard to pull up, but the garage on Shore Road, Bill and.
Dan Bills.
Danny Mills here. They, well, they have no, they have two flat, two of the swoop signs plus three steak signs. Not supposed to have any. So they have a letter from me saying, take them down or I'll take them down.
Feather sign, feather flag?
Two flag, two feather flags plus three steak signs.
Oh, I didn't see those. Maybe they took them down.
Maybe they took them down. Let's go back out and take a look.
The banner on the fence, there's no permit for that.
No, there's no permit for the banner on the fence. And again, likewise, I was talking with Jeannie Mallory who came in the other day. For the restaurant just past the. The highway exit sign that has the jazz on whatever the day is hanging over their fence and she wants that one taken up. So sign is a big issue at the moment.
That's the old line man?
Yeah, it's the old line.
Hey, you must be slow in the zoning office right now, huh?
Well, no, I mean, again, what I literally do from eight to nine before.
Sign drive?
I describe and it's somebody through one and somebody's Shore Road, somebody's Hall Road, Hall's Road.
You should save your time on the state road ones. Let the state do that.
And we still can't get the canoe place to take down their feather flag.
No, so you send a letter so they know it's you. They don't think that there's, there's random people.
Yeah, so go ahead.
No, I, so what is the, what is the, so thank, I guess, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And so what is the suggested action you want taken?
Well, I mean, I guess. You, I want to let you know that if you hear about signs being taken, yes, I've taken shots. But also if you see signs in particular locations that you want me to go out and take a look at, just let me know and I'll go out and take a look at them. This seems to be again in summer where I'm going around looking at signs. So if there's particular signs you want me to look at, just give me an email or whatever and I'll go out and take a look.
Has there been an increase in complaints?
Um, there has been some.
Or what was the impetus?
The impetus of this is that the first select woman came to me and said she didn't like the proliferation of signs and that I please take them. Okay, so this is coming from the Selective's Office to me saying, please address this issue. Okay?
But we also have a regulation too.
You have, yes, I'm trying to be consistent.
Yeah, but isn't there in the regulation, like the contractor sign, like, oh, I would caution you because like Ed Dante took one sign that had an Apple AirTag in it. And the police showed up at the public work garage for a theft.
Let me explain what I'm taking, what I'm not taking.
Yeah, yeah.
The ones I took on Friday were two ice cream signs, a pizza sign from in front of Andy's Place. And a Dunkin' Donuts sign from the site next door. I took some of the ones from in front of the gas station on Shore Road that were for. The Black Hall Summer Camp or it was.
Is that the kids camp?
There's another.
Hartford Avenue now too, they.
Okay, so. I'm not taking ones for like the graduation ones. I leave the graduation ones. If there's contractors ones or for sales signs, excuse me, I leave those. It's only for things that are clearly not event related. That are clearly commercial or sales signs that I.
Yeah.
Right now, I've been noticing a lot of the little league signs going up. I'm leaving them for now, but if they continue to be there another month, six weeks, I'll probably pull up some of the little league signs that are around right now.
Might I make a suggestion just from a business standpoint specifically for the businesses that need signage to try to draw attention? Maybe leave the sign and tell the business owner, hey, you can't have your sign out here because.
Don't ever take it.
I, I have been in touch with the Chestnut Market folks repeatedly about what's going on there. I've been in touch with the best way.
Yep.
Their signs. It doesn't really seem to get me anywhere. In fact, not only that, but they now have a dumpster that they're not supposed to have. The best way does. So.
Dumpster in the back behind.
On the, if you, if you're facing best way on the left hand side there on the road is a full dumpster.
Really?
They have, we have the regular dumpster.
Yeah, in the back.
In the back. Also overflowing, but they added a second dumpster because they couldn't keep up apparently. Way on the street and I had given them a letter saying, take it away. In fact, I was called back in from vacation. My weekend vacation for an emergency zoning situation, that dumpster. It had to issue a cease and desist order that day. So yeah, that was when I didn't know because of vacation July second. Anyway, so. There we go. But so yeah. The gas stations are tough nuts. And again, I have issued, Black Hall has two A frames and a feather flag. They've gotten now three years running now, letters from me, cease and desist orders from me, warnings I'm going to send to the attorney. Doesn't get me anywhere.
What do our regulations say is the trigger for, like, how long does this? Like, I don't know, is it three strikes and you're out kind of thing? I mean, I don't know. Is that something our regulations get into?
One strike and you're out, but.
Yeah, I mean, the sign's legal or it's not legal.
Yeah, right.
And if it's illegal, then I can issue a cease and desist order. But I mean, realistically, I'm not going to sue them over a sign. Because, you know, from a standpoint, if I ever have to go in front of a judge over a feather flag, the judge is going to look at me like, why are you wasting my time? So.
Have you nothing better to do, sir?
Well, that is, so I try and limit. I don't want to threaten litigation where I really am not going to.
Call through.
Through, right? So there's a limit and they kind of understand there's a limit to what I can realistically enforce, which is why. Again, I've sort of gone through and just yanked the slings out of the ground and took them here. Because, well, I figure it goes both ways. There's a limit to how angry they can be if they lose their, their illegal signs. Because they know the signs are illegal to begin with. So for them, I think it's just a cost of doing business. They pull them, they put them in the ground and if I yank them out, then well, too bad for that sign. I think that's why they haven't come and complained to me because they know they're not supposed to be there. So. Okay, so that being said, I think that's all I have for your report unless anybody else has anything to add.
I have a question. The paddleball courts.
Paddleball courts, yes.
I noticed it's come down at the.
The prior paddleball court has come down. It's the pickleball court is up and running.
Paddleball.
Paddleball. They took it down. It was rotting underneath. They're planning to replace it. Okay, so there should theoretically be a new paddleball court there at some point this fall. But the old one apparently, once they got underneath it, it was all rotted out. So they demolished it, halted away. They're planning to put a new one back in splits. Okay?
Worry. Question for you, but what's, I'll put that with inland. What's, are we getting anything from that?
Well, I mean.
Couldn't follow that after a certain point.
Well, I mean, ultimately. There was this whole tussle about they came in with an alternative proposal from the one they were ordered to do by the Wetlands Commission. And then when the Wetlands Commission was like, are you suggesting for us to modify the order? And the answer was, we'll do the order if that's what you want, but we just thought this might be nice if you want to look at it. And the commission was like, no, just do our damn order. So that's where they are now. They owe us a bond and they owe us remediation work. And until they get all of that completed, they cannot come in for any sort of zoning approvals. And again, with the expiration of their surface water discharge permit. They're going to have to come in with something that does something with the surface water. Because the E P has made it clear they're not going to issue a new surface water discharge permit for that site. So. You will at some point theoretically see something on this, but. Not sure when that's going to be. I'm guessing probably next year at this point.
So you haven't signed off on their renewal. You're looking to have them come to us.
I don't know at this point.
Because with the expiration of the surface water discharge permit. And the need to do something new with that surface water, I think that marks a substantial change in the character of what they were doing. And I think that the zoning commission should act on.
Putting the film in the flood plain.
Well, all of the above, per, per wetlands now they have to take out the burn. The burn should have been removed. I, I get it, but the other, I mean, the, they're going to be removing all of the. I'm trying to come up with the word. My Millings, Burt Millings, here's the word, Millings. They put Millings down on the path going to where the culvert is. All of Millings have to come out and be replaced with stone. They have to take out the boulders that were put along the edge of the road there that was next to where the culvert is. The net effect of this may very well be that that culvert is not going to survive. So I expect that you're likely to see something that amends that culvert situation. Which because Three Mile River is navigable water under the federal government would require Army Corps approval. Which is what they've been desperately trying to avoid because Army Corps approval is apparently a much more involved process than, you know, just coming to us. So. More to come on that, but at the moment where we are is they have to implement the Wetlands order before they can come back in to get the zoning approved. Okay? So that's.
That's it.
That's it for zoning on the Z E O side. So the next issue, I guess, is the, the regulations. And again, the topic for tonight is the use table. And everybody should have gotten a copy of the use table. We have extra copies here. Does anyone want to pass it around? Yep. Okay, so.
This is like they're not stated, right?
Well, this is the one that should have been in the one you, in the draft regs you already have.
Seven nine?
Yeah. So.
Seven nine or six two?
It did disappear.
Well.
I was pissed too.
I thought, did, did he make the correction?
He made the correction.
That's changed.
That, that has changed, but that was, that was nearly a one column difference that screwed up the mention.
Quite, but almost. There was one number on the, one column that I don't think changed.
Okay, well, that's why, that's why we're doing this tonight.
All right.
Okay, because he is waiting for us to get back with this and tell him if his changes need to be made further. And again, you have the most recent updated seven nine regs. And again, on the front there is what he says is different about it, which is not that much.
So this use table is the exact same use table that we have now, just in a different format?
Theoretically, what he did was, because you don't have a use table now, right? Right now. Uses in the regulation, section five is each zone lists its uses separately. Now we're putting it all in one place. So you can compare uses and how to get them approved from zone to zone. So this is an entirely new thing, but takes just the information you already have. And puts it in presumably a more user friendly format.
Because you can see all across the page.
Got that.
Exactly what you're going to have to.
So when it, just have a couple of questions. So regarding the outside, the. Commercial vehicle storage.
What, what, where are you?
Under, I guess, any of the lots, there's an asterisk at the bottom.
What page you want?
I'm all mixed up here. Hold on.
Five, one, five, two.
On page twenty. In your packet, in the bottom right hand corner, the numbers.
Page twenty.
Section six. Section six.
That would be.
Section six, but it's C section eight, three, five in the regulations.
What is it again?
Commercial vehicle parking.
Yeah, commercial vehicle parking. And then in the bottom of the page, it says C section eight, three, five for allowances and restrictions for commercial vehicle parking. So when I go to eight, three, five, I just want to confirm that the eight, three, five definition. You, you see page twenty? Are you on page twenty of the talk?
I am.
Go to the bottom left corner, like mid left, right there. Nope, the next next. Yeah, the note sections. So I'm just trying to clarify this, that there is no language change. That this is the existing language. C section eight. C-section eight, three, five for allowances and restrictions for commercial vehicle parking. So when I look at eight, three, five. Actually, eight, three, six, so that's an error.
Well, no, in the version I have here, it's eight, three, five. This is the version that.
Yeah, so I'm.
Eight, seven, nine, twenty-five.
Okay, so I guess my version's outdated, five, nine. Okay, so your version says.
My version says eight, three, five.
Okay, so.
All lots, the off-street parking, only one commercial vehicle outdoors in the garage is allowed as a right. On any lot provided such vehicle does not exceed seventy-five hundred pounds gross vehicle weight, weight empty plus rated load capacity.
Yeah, and that's, I checked, I actually was looking at all the stuff in red today, and that's, that's what's in the.
So, so did that definition, did the seventy-five hundred pounds get, is that in our existing regulations?
No, I don't believe it is.
Okay, so that's, that's just concerning, because like, my truck by itself weighs more than seventy-five hundred pounds. Um, and it's a pickup truck. So my concern is that where this gross vehicle weight rating is gonna set a bunch of people out of compliance. So that's new language added in here. The seventy-five hundred pounds.
It is, yes.
Okay, would that have been in red inside the other?
Yes. Yeah, let's look, we can look under seven, seven, C in the current regs, it's a cross-reference right here, and just see what seven, seven, C says.
Yeah, it might be in there already, I don't know, you know?
I thought it just.
But actually it does, here we go.
I thought it said exactly that.
There we go. See.
Yep, yep, I see it there.
It's already there. Okay?
Yeah, that's not a change.
It's not a change.
It's, he just reworded stuff a little bit, but he didn't change the numbers.
Okay, so that, that, that doesn't change, Michael.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was kinda.
Again, when you, when you pull seven, seven, C, that's where, that's where it came from, and apparently.
Do, do, does anyone think that we should modify that number? Because I mean, that's like.
A lot changing.
Yeah, that's a phase two issue.
That's a phase two.
Okay. And then yacht clubs is not a permitted use on the WF twenty zone in the current regs, is that correct?
Well, let's take a.
Sorry, I don't have other rigs, otherwise I'd go back to them.
Well, I have both sets of regs right here, okay? Waterfronts. Permitted uses marine facility, boat livery, sales loft, ship chandary, um, special permit uses. Retail business, full-service restaurant, club, cemetery, government services, park. Club, club is there.
So they have it as a prohibited use now in this new table?
Well, what, what, what is your, well, let's see what.
Yeah, I guess, good question, right? What's the definition of a club? I'm just thinking of it. Where else would you have the yacht?
On the same page.
There's club are permitted in every zone.
Okay, um, I am on, um. Sorry. No, I am no longer on twenty. Is yacht club defined, I guess?
Club, let's see. Is approved by, it says here, special permit in the WF forty, in WF twenty, rather. So that's, that hasn't changed.
Okay, but is yacht club defined in the definitions of this new, uh, packet of the new regulations?
Yes.
I'm just confused why it wouldn't, it. I just wanna make sure, maybe it should be included, I don't know if it was an oversight, or if it just doesn't in the WF twenty. Well, that's my point, where else you gonna have a yacht club? It's not on the water.
But you don't have public land, it's all private land.
What do you mean?
All that, you've got, you're talking like down.
Just anywhere, anywhere, any WF twenty property that is a marina could be a yacht club.
Oh, yacht club seems to be a separate category.
It, it is a separate category in the new regs.
But it's not explicit, that's, those are the things I'm trying to clarify. So that is a change, that is new to these regs.
Yes.
So why don't we, what you're saying is you would like yacht club included in WF twenty as a special permit use, is that the?
Yeah, I guess, just there's nowhere else it could be, so.
Well, it's allowed in C-ten and C-thirty.
That's what. Yacht club is it.
I'm not sure why you need them in C-ten or.
Well, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting.
But they are allowed there by special permit, and we can take it out there if you want, but they're not allowed in the WF twenty.
So the defin, the definition of yacht club in this is primarily social and educational, I'm not gonna read the whole thing to you, but it, it. It does not contemplate in any way.
Water-dependent use.
Well, then what's the difference between that and a club?
You have to bring your boat and a trailer to the yacht.
Well, I, I just, this is just one thing I noticed, so I don't know if anyone has any comments on that, but I don't see why we would prohibit it in, in the waterfront zone, and that's. Clearly a water-dependent use.
Well, club is not a defined term, but yacht club is.
Oh, wait, so club's not a defined term inside the new regs?
And club is everywhere.
I know, I see, good thing we're paying attention to this.
We want, it's defined, club is defined on page. One ninety-six.
One ninety-six?
Uh, one ninety-six. Oh, hang on, I'm sorry. I was looking for C, okay, okay. So hang, what, what is? Oh, I wasn't, okay, I was in uses and not, okay. There's two separate, okay.
I guess that's a key to a nonprofit. I guess that's the difference, right?
Profit presumably, okay. Okay.
But where is the yacht?
Yacht club can be for profit apparently, that's, that's not, it's not limited. So it looks like there is a, a meaningful distinction, but again, back to your point, Michael, should we make, make it a special permit use in the WF twenty? Cause that's presumably where you'd want your yacht club to be.
Yeah, I don't know, whether it's like special permit or just a regular site plan.
Well, clubs are special permits everywhere, so I think just with that.
So the, so the question is, we have a definition, we have a regulation for yacht clubs, right?
Yes, we have.
It's very general.
As we always get.
Right.
That's just a new.
Which is a.
It's just.
Like it's a subset.
The whole thing is that it's weird that, how did it end up not on WF twenty is your point?
Yeah, I just don't.
Like, if that didn't end up in WF twenty, like.
Is there other things?
Well, that's what, that's what we're supposed to.
That's what, that's.
Yeah, right, so we're just, just say like, we think we should change it, that's what we're, we don't have to work, you know, like, okay, let's fix that.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, that's it, that's all we need to know, right?
I, I added it in to tell Gomes.
So then that brings me to one other thing, was the trailer storage in the WF twenty. Trailer storage.
What page you on now?
Really, I'm not, nowhere yet, I'm looking for it. It'd be an accessory use. So on page twenty-one.
Where do you see it?
Uh, looking for it now. Commercial vehicle parking.
I see trailer, but it says trailer construction, trailer permanent, trailer temporary.
There's another, um.
Okay, wanna go back to.
Mike, what, what you guys do down at your marina, is that a club?
No.
Is that a yacht club?
Nope. It's a marina, but like, for example, um, in Essex at the, well, Essex Chantilly, which is now Brewer-Donals. They have a club at the marina that is a yacht club for them, you know, for people who have a boat at the marina.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't have any plans of having a yacht club, I just don't wanna exclude the waterfront penability of.
I get that, I get that.
Yes, so.
What page?
Page twenty. Yes, it's, but that's not on the.
Recreational vehicle or trailer parking?
Correct. So there, is it right now, you're only allowed to have one trailer per property?
Yes, that's the current rule.
That's the current rule, okay. More camping tent trailer, recreational trailer, that, I was just caught up on the. If this trailer parking rule applied to the WF twenty, because that would mean like, we can't park boat trailers on the property or something.
It doesn't, really, it's not carried forward. Recreational vehicle or trailer parking isn't on the. List over here.
Correct.
My, I'm, I'm looking back at the original regulations, that yacht club thing, and it was not under WF twenty in, in the, in the current regs.
Correct. Yeah, no, I think.
Over here, recreational vehicle or trailer.
Yeah, so it's prohibited.
Not allowed, right?
So that, that, that struck out to me, because how do you, where do, where do people park their boat trailers? At the marina, they're, it's, it's prohibited use.
I, I think the. Point was that it's prohibited use as a primary use in the sense that.
Now, is your accessory?
Let me explain. You can't store trailers by themselves there as a use. You can have a boat on a trailer. And that's okay, but if you, we don't want that to become the. We don't want your marina to be the place where you just store trailers by themselves without the boats.
Yeah, but people put the boat in the water, and then the trailer's sitting there.
But that's a temporary.
The boat comes up.
Then the boat comes out, and they put it back in the trailer, and it goes away.
Yeah, I know.
That or it's in a slip, right?
Yeah, but what I'm getting at is, is like, we store trailers in the winter, we store trailers in the summer.
With a boat on them?
With and without. It's not, it's not, we're not discre, it's not discretionary, right?
That's gotta be a change of use.
Yeah, I, I guess the point is, Michael, eh, we can talk about it.
No, I don't, I've just, just, that's why we're here, right?
That's not, I don't think that the current understanding of the regs is that you, that it's designed to store trailers there necessarily. I don't think the current regs could contemplate.
No, they don't, I mean, all of the water-dependent use things are kinda vague. Um, but now that we're clarifying them, I'm just wanna make sure that we're not, I'm not the only one that stores trailers, I can tell you that.
Well, I think Eric's right, we need to discuss this, because it affects more than your marina.
Correct.
It's sound view, it may affect, you know.
Well, it'll only affect the WF twenty properties. Cause I'm exclusively talking about the W. No, that's not WF twenty.
What is it then?
The WF twenty only is on the, the Four Mile River and the Connecticut River and Black Hall.
Okay.
Those are the only.
Other places that might be affected that we should probably look at then, besides.
Yeah, I'm just, those are the ones that I'm looking at now, is the WF twenty zone art, you know, section.
Quick process check, at this point in the review, are we supposed to be looking for? Accuracy in the transcription of the.
The, the philosophical issues of. Major changes in uses probably are gonna need to wait.
Or clarification of uses, that's, that's phase two.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're getting a whole host of new definitions, so.
But that, that's not one.
Sorry, you're gonna say America?
No, no, I'm, I, I agree, I think there's a whole bunch of these, if I like, there's an exclusion. Or T rooms, I'm not even sure what that is, but I also like to know why, it just, you know, there's a bunch of those.
What's a T room?
I don't know what that is, you know?
There's no definition.
Um, so, I mean, I think there's a whole bunch of these that I've just marked, like, when I've got there, why, what is this? Cause I don't know. And that, I mean, you're picking up a perfect example of. Something we have to discuss for phase two, I think.
Well, I think this would be part of phase one, wouldn't it?
Well.
Not if they're expanding the definition, or trying to clarify a definition.
This feels like something that would benefit from a workshop, where we just sit together.
Right. Not here.
And then instead of sort of throwing out ideas, go line by line systematically.
Well, I just didn't want this.
An accurate transcription, then we can flag things that, that we need to talk about. Necessarily makes sense.
I agree, but the, uh, my concern was, is that this use table is in front of us now for approval.
Not still for approval, we're not, you know, finally approving it, what other holes do we still see?
Okay.
We're not, we're not at. Okay, good, this is it. And it's, it's where the holes. Or does this look good for now?
How do, how do we do a workshop then? What do you suggest?
We had talked about a special meeting, just go through it, and I think you have all the heads together, have the documents out, line by line.
Yeah.
Systematically, start at the top and finish at the bottom, and then we'll know that we have an accurate transcript into the new type transcript. It's a conversion to the new format, and then through that, we can have a discussion about, that doesn't make sense, and flag it for the next. To walk for the next phase.
Are, are we planning then to set a special meeting just to do that? Is that? Part of what we're doing tonight then?
No, I think that's what we're discussing, trying to decide how to organize it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sensing we're just kinda coming at it randomly, and, and this is the kinda thing that could be approached systematically, and, and at the end of it, we're done.
That you, cause there's so many things that you catch, there's many things that Jane catches and Denise and, you know. So kinda going through it line by line does seem to have a lot of merit to it.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, and you either just, yeah, cause it can do something, like, if you're just going through it, you just say alternate energy systems. Any, anything? No, okay.
What does that mean?
Cemetery, anything? No, if anybody has caught anything, but that, that's what, our, that was our charge, was to go through and, and catch anything.
And I think we need to be disciplined about it. Again, that's gonna be a transparency thing, cause we're gonna get asked about. When this gets opened up for public discussion.
Okay. So are we looking to set a workshop now, or?
I mean, we're here.
Yeah. We were, had talked about doing something in August.
Right.
You know, not necessarily a regular meeting, and I think it would be good to do something as a workshop. Just to do this, so that, because we're already tired, we've already been here an hour and a half, if we just come in and we're like, boom, just. Frank it out, I think we'd be better than trying to do other stuff before we get to.
Right, right. I, I totally agree, okay, so we don't meet in August, but we can have a special meeting in August.
That's right.
I'm happy to host at my house in August. You guys dinner too.
That's very nice.
If we're allowed to.
As a meeting of the zoning commission, the public would theoretically have to be able to attend, so if you're willing to have any member of the public show.
I won't advertise what's on the menu, have fun. No, no, but I'm, I'm kinda saying, like, if we want this, so that's, I appreciate that, so even like a workshop. Is open to the public.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime that us more than three people get together, has to be open to the public.
I can just choose.
Yes, 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 actually.
Well, now, wait a minute, now that's an idea, do we?
Yeah, Foya really doesn't like that.
Oh, well, you know.
That's fine, but I think we can still, if we have it.
I mean, I wouldn't mind getting together with you and sitting and going through these things.
We did have some, you know, coffee and tea and snacks for people, and just said, let's just crank this out.
Yeah, are we allowed to bring snacks to it for our own consumption?
You can bring whatever you want.
I'll bring the alcohol. Well, I tell you, boy, that, that thing's gonna go south fast.
I don't think anybody was on the commission, maybe you were, where I bought candy bars for everybody. And we had the worst argument with everybody, because everybody got sugared up.
So we all wanna be getting lick it up.
I mean, if, if they got high on candy bars, we not.
A special meeting, and we were doing something like this, or rewrite.
What you're suggesting is to bring edibles for.
Gummy bears, I'll bring the gummy bears.
It is legal now.
So do you think we will start? When we have this workshop, do you think the use table is where we wanna prank? That's a good point, where do we begin?
I mean, that's, that's the hardest one to do the double check on.
It's been inverted.
It's new.
It was district-centric, and then they inverted it to go use-centric with the districts.
Right.
Yeah, so, and, and you, so you, and you just need to make sure it, it's all set, so that's, that's, that's the one that's off.
I have a question, it's kinda unrelated, but not really unrelated, this, maybe for you, Eric. It's, it's prohibited uses in this, under accessory uses, private boathouse or dock, and then there's an asterisk with a three, or like a number three. And it says boathouses and docks are subjects of coastal site plan review, zoning, site plan, or special permit requirements as applicable to elements outside of that jurisdiction. But for the C-ten or C-thirty, this only applies in a couple places. But for the C ten or C thirty, this only applies in a couple of places. Um, specifically down along Lieutenant River. It's saying docks are prohibited in the C ten, C, what, what is, uh, where the hanger goose is? What is that? That's a.
It's C thirty.
C thirty. They have a dock. So.
We're not like get specific right now because we're trying to like work through the process, what process we're using. You're just like getting into another.
Yeah, no, this is just a question for him. It wasn't really a question for you.
Well, overall, she's obviously part of the commission.
It's interrupting the discussion though about trying to come up with a plus.
I thought we already had a plan for that.
Well.
We don't, we don't have a date.
No, we don't have anything yet. So we're talking.
I got it.
Yeah. So the, what we had talked about last time in terms of process was doing the tables, focusing this meeting on the, the land use regu, the use regulations, because that's where the most changes happen. And particularly related to these tables. But then we talked about making sure we looked at everything that was in red. Because that's where there's language changes. It's not that they necessarily change things, but that's where, and that's where we, you know, they, but they sometimes combined paragraphs shortened it, you know, so we just needed to look at everything in red. The other thing that, um, they, uh, the gentleman, I can't think of the gentleman's name, but the, our consultant, the consultant was saying was, um, was to focus on accessory use. That there was things that we needed to look at from the accessory use. And then, um, there obviously very clearly is to go through the definitions. So that's, you know, what he really asked us to focus on and where we would find the most changes. I know I spent the time just going back and forth with, and, and checking off everything that was done like in the, um, you know, in, that we had in, in, in the use thing that he gave us. So where he has all the uses. That said, the tables are tricky and I didn't get to make sure that all of those things were done. And not being around as long as some other people who may just know off the top of their heads. It's like, it's really back and forth for me. So I think that's where, so if we, if we set, so we do that, but then look at, and, 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 you know, look at again everything that has been eliminated, uh, uh, I should say everything in red. Oh, that was the other thing. Everything that's been eliminated with.
Yeah, I had that note. Anything that's been eliminated.
And I guess, how did, how did that get marked? I can't remember. Do you remember how that's marked? How do we know been eliminated?
Um, at the end.
At the end.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's a table at the end.
And there's a table. I, I know it was somewhere now. It's like, I'm sorry, I forgot that. I, I had that here, but I, I, I missed that when I was reading. So everything, so besides the, the tables, everything in red, everything eliminated. Accessory regulations and definitions. That's what I had.
Okay.
In my notes.
Um, that's a lot to try and tackle in one meeting this.
But I think if we, but if we tackle the, you know, the table and let's say everything in red. Then we have another, you know, and then maybe, you know, at our next meeting, but if we start this process, but I think having a a workshop just to go over the table stuff and again, everything in red, I think.
Your, um, theoretical date for regular meeting, though you don't have one, is August eleventh? So is that when you'd like to have a special meeting for August eleventh?
I'm gonna say no, because I have, I'm actually gonna be, um, no, way back when, I, knowing we weren't supposed to be, you know, I guess like scheduled my vacation.
Somebody's gonna have to plan my wife or I don't take her out to dinner on her birthday.
Oh, definitely, it's definitely, you know.
So let's, let's pick it.
No, no, it's like I'm on vacation that week.
So let, let's figure out. Okay, are, are there dates Denise that are better for you in August?
Uh, you know, except for the week, except for that week, the week of the thirteenth through the nineteenth, but otherwise I'm pretty much around.
Okay, how about anybody else? Is anybody else planning to be away?
Sorry, though, I said the wrong week. I was in the.
You're talking tenth through the seventh.
The tenth through the sixteenth. Sorry, I was.
Yeah, but that's my bad weekend.
I, I can't do six, seven, eight.
Why don't we look, why don't we look at the last two weeks in August and see if we can get something there?
Last week I can't do. But that's eighteen through twenty two is.
So what's the?
Eighteen through twenty two.
How about the fourth? I'm hearing anybody.
No, I'm gonna, well, I, you know, I can't, but that's okay. I've got to go to Boston for work.
I am just coming back from vacation on the fourth, so it probably won't be so helpful.
Okay. I think you have, it's time to really look at stuff too, so.
Okay, the, the week of the eighteenth then was that? We were looking at that. Is there anything in the week of the eighteenth that works for anyone?
Eighteenth, yeah, that works for me.
What's the fifteenth fall on?
Fifteenth is a Friday. We can't, not going to do it Friday. So.
No, that's my wife's birthday, so I'm just trying.
Okay. Well, that gets you in trouble. Make it the fifteenth.
Yeah, obviously, on the eleventh or the fourth.
Can people do the eighteen?
Eighteen?
I'm clear.
Is it Monday?
It's Monday.
I haven't checked with the.
Found a date.
How about Tuesday?
Okay.
What, nineteen, nineteen?
Why? What's wrong with the eighteen?
Just because I'm, just give me one extra day to get back to vacation.
Oh, you're gonna be in vacation the week before. I get that.
I would suggest we try to meet earlier though, because you know, we're gonna start at six thirty and.
No, I would. We want to try six, five thirty is or.
I, I, I work full time. It's hard for.
I understand.
I agree.
Well, then, six o'clock the right time?
Six on, on Tuesday?
I might. That's okay.
I can do the nineteen.
Thumbs up?
Okay.
On the nineteenth?
Nineteenth at six P M.
I could.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Bring snacks.
Maybe the room is available.
Well, you don't need this room for workshop. I'm going to probably aim for the mezzanine, maybe. Is that a better?
If we got people, if, if we have to put stuff up on the screen, you know, and have some AV support, it might be, might be good to be able to get up and move around. Unless you sit at the table.
Well, let me see what rooms are available. And I will get back to you. All I need to do for legal notice purposes.
August, so what day do we?
Nineteen, six o'clock.
You say August nineteenth at eighteen hundred.
Thank you. Let's see end times. Should we set that now?
I think it should be nine. Is that too late? That too long? Three hours to work on this?
I don't think so. We gotta have to hash it out.
Yeah.
It's too long, but we need it.
Okay, six to nine.
We can always get out earlier and just schedule it later, you know?
Six to nine.
At the special meeting.
Special meeting, yes.
So I should wait for that special meeting to bring up these things that I've already highlighted here that you're supposed to bring up for this meeting.
Very, very good.
So how about in prep for that? We all have notes.
Have one.
Can we, um?
Get submitting to me and I will handle.
Give me that.
So we all are looking.
I don't want you sending things to each other.
Folks, listen carefully to what Eric has to say. No inter email communication in the words of our madam secretary.
Yep.
No talking on email, texts, anything. Everything has to be funneled directly to Eric.
I guess we get for you gets kind of, um, right, upset about that. So I don't want anyone getting into for you difficulty. So I don't, I don't want anyone wanting to do the for you issue.
Don't ask questions of anyone, you know, Eric.
Um, so the, the goal is to have it done in a public meeting that people are able to attend.
Along those notes, we, some people got a special missive from Sloan. Uh, and I only found out because somebody then responded. I think it was yourself. Yeah. I mean, that also has to fall under this discussion. If you have a message, a meeting note from the community, that should be part of a correspondence file that should be. All of us should.
Theoretically, if you were approached separately from, uh, by any ritual in public, you need to say, I'm sorry, I cannot address this. This is, has to take up out of regular. Again, in this particular case, I tried to send it out to the rest of the commission members to keep everyone informed, obviously. As you pointed out, it didn't judge everybody that, and so I sent it out later.
But I mean, the, the person from the community sent it to only specifics.
Right. And I think that was by design.
The, the policy needs to be if you receive something out of the force of regular business, pro member of the community, you have to say, I'm sorry, I cannot review this. Has to come to the commission as part of the commission's business. So you can't be receiving independent commentary from members of the public.
Do we, do we, in that response, do we copy the entire?
No, 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 no. I would. All I would do is forward that to Eric.
I was thinking, I would even respond.
Just forward. Eric, I mean, uh, but I mean, um, Sloan sent that letter to me.
Yeah.
And Eric and I, and you, and I did not respond. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Certain people, certain people. Right. Let Eric.
I'm gonna save that and I'm, I'm gonna take your, that approach and not respond just forward.
Just don't respond and forward it. That's the.
Like again, someone comes up to you in the grocery store wants to talk to you about this. Nope. Pretty much have to say, I'm sorry, but I cannot talk about this, the stuff outside the, the commission. Okay.
But then are you putting that in a correspondence for us all to see it?
If it is something that is part of a commission meeting, then yes, I am. Okay. Um, but I, I have to be honest, I'm not, I mean, the, the Sloan thing is not made by awesome place at this point because I don't know where to put it.
Well, that's my point. You could get a comment from anybody in the community that could come to us. What do we want to do with that communication that's?
If there's. If there's i- i- if it belongs in front of the commission, the commission discussion, I will bring it up under correspondence or CEO board or whatever else. But I don't want to spam you necessarily with hundreds of these each meeting. So I'm going to be gatekeeper to some degree and say, I'm sorry, this is not a commission matter. There's nothing pending or, you know, whatever else. Um, you know, I, I'm going to try and make sure that there's an issue of relevancy. If there are irrelevant comments, I'm not going to have the commission get bogged down with a hundred irrelevant comments every meeting. So I, I will try and act as gatekeeper and I'll try and summarize for you if there are things out there that I think you need to, to be aware of. But I'm not gonna, I'm not going to bother the commission with every single email that necessarily comes in. Okay, that's, that's why I, that's why I said my, that's my role here. To act as gatekeeper in those situations.
I thi, I think that the challenge is when it gets addressed to the chairman or gets addressed, you know, because then it's like, then they're asking to engage the commission. I think that's, that's very different than someone who just sends you something on zoning, who just like, who knows what they're talking about. Cause you know, I used to get that all the time.
Yeah, dozens of those a day. So.
Yeah. Cause I, you know, I, I know what you deal with, believe me.
Well, there's a, a, a public thing on the website where you click the thing and it just generally shoots it off to, to somebody at the town hall.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I get hit with those regularly and I try and respond to them, so.
But I think if someone says, we would like the commission to address this and come, and, and then it's up to the chairman, whether he wants, I, you know, that really is like, you know, the chairman, whether he wants to put it on the agenda or not.
And, and all I do have are discussions.
That's what the discussion on this was. So, you know.
Then one other thing, can we please not get another version of these regs till our special meeting? I mean, I had spent all this time on the June ones, and then I'd spent on May, and now we have July. It's getting a little difficult.
Honestly, in the absence of any progress tonight particularly, you will not be getting another set until after you meet and review.
Okay, good. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, if I don't get back to Mr. Gomes with what we want changed, then he, at this point, there's nothing further that's going to be changed. He is waiting for us to get back to him with our commentary on this draft regulation. So until that happens, he is not taking further action. Okay?
Okay.
Can I get a version that's printed with the red?
Sure, I will have Fred get that for you. Okay?
Times two.
All right, so meeting is going to be the special meeting to work on this is going to, come on, you know me.
August nineteenth.
August nineteenth at six P M at a location in Town Hall TBD. Okay, final item on the agenda, the approval of the June minutes. Has everyone read the minutes?
Yep.
And do I have a motion for approval? Mo- motion second by Mary Jo? Is there?